It turns out it helps. Not quite as dark looking.
Nicole, I have my agenda up. You don't have to look around the screen if you don't need to.
Great, thank you. I have not pulled it out yet.
Okay.
All right, we're going left.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Peterborough, New Hampshire Select Board Meeting for March 16th, 2021. Tyler Ward, I'll chair the meeting this evening, along with me, our fellow Select Board members, Bill Taylor and Ed Youngst. We also have had Administrator Nicole McStay, and I see a few other members of the town staff here as well. Tonight, well, apologies for being a little late. We had another meeting running a little long. So immediately, we'll hear from John Sargent and Rebecca Martin regarding NH Department of Transportation, US Route 202 and NH Route 123 Bridge Project. We'll have a Department of Public Works update from Seth McLean regarding seasonal flushing, West Peterborough Sidewalk Extension Project, and the Riverwalk Electrical Vehicle Charging Station installations. We'll also, oh, we'll also hear about New Hampshire allocations under the American Rescue Plan. Stick around for that. There's some interesting news there. Under Old Business, we'll get a town meeting update. We'll get some finalized dates and meeting organization. And then we'll vote to approve minutes from January 5th, February 2nd, and February 16th. So with that, I will turn it over to John Sargent and Rebecca Martin. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. I'm gonna try the screen share and we'll see if I get lost right from the start, so. Does everybody see Peterborough Bridge by any chance?
Not yet.
Not yet?
There we go.
All right. Right there. All right, good. I'm John Sargent from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. We have a few others joining us kind of to listen in, and any one of them could be in and out at any moment. Don Lightford and Maggie Baldwin from our Highway Departments. Rebecca Martin from our Environmental Department should be helping to answer any environmental questions because that very tends to confuse me. Dave Scott and Jason Tremblay from our Bridge Department. And then we have three people from the consulting firm HTA, Ed Weingarten from the Bridge Section, Kimberly Pace from the Environmental Section, and Steve Haas, their Highway Guide. Typically, early on in a project, we like to meet with the town and kind of get everybody aware of what's going on. We do a little bit of early research. So this is a very front end of this project. And so I'm just gonna kind of touch on what we're looking at here, what we think we may be running into, and then kind of get your feel of what you're aware of in this particular area. This project is the state project, Peterborough 27712. It is a bridge project. This bridge carries US 202 and the Hampshire 123 over the Cantorac River, just north of where Route 136 comes in. And you're probably all familiar with it. It's right near the, what was the Wilder, I think, the thermometer factory, and now is a rotary park, and an 1836 dam that was used for sawmill and, I think, Wilders factory. I have a quick location map. It's kind of shows us up in the North Village of Peterborough. And you can see that, whoops, sorry, my mouse. You can see it's right where 136 comes in with 202 and 123. I have an aerial view that kind of shows the site a little bit better and give a sense of what we'll be dealing with. We have the 1836 dam down in the bottom left corner. Charles Wilder Thermometer Factory Site and Rotary Park in the northwest corner. There's some remains of the sluiceway that was part of both the factory and the sawmill. I think in 2007, there was mercury remediation done in sort of the orange area right at the end of the sluiceway. In 1942, when they originally built this bridge, predating it was an outlet canal for the sluiceway, most of which had been filled in, but there's still remnants of it up by the canoe access and parking. There's some wetlands mitigation for the canoe access and parking. The town has a sewer line and sewer siphon on the downstream side of the bridge. We have Old Street Road coming in right at the end of the south side of the bridge along with Route 136. Very spooked, right on the corner, and of course, the dam right on the edge. Next, I have just, this is actually one of the plans from the 1974 widening. Originally, this bridge was built in 1942, and you can kind of see the outline of the original abutment. It sort of has some spurts coming off the back. And then it was extended in 1972. The pier was extended, and some additional girders were added to create a wider bridge. Currently, the bridge's ground has pavement width about 44 feet, which gives us two 12-foot travel lanes and a nice 10-foot shoulder on each side. Now, on the upstream side, we actually also have a six-foot sidewalk. The width of the bridge is about 53, 54 feet. And it's one, it's about 176 feet long, two spans, sort of a traditional bridge in that it has steel girders, concrete deck. Very heavy skewed because of the curve. This Route 202 carries about 7,000 cars a day. About 7%, of those are trucks. This bridge was added to the red list back in 2012, and it's currently number 18. The overall condition of the bridge is poor. I'll give you a few pictures to kind of show why. The existing deck is old. You can see the saw effluence working its way through. And this is pretty, pretty common throughout the bottom of the deck. So it ended up with our bridge inspectors getting a four rating. The superstructure, which is typically the girders and the secondary members, have a lot of rust. You can see the original 1942 girders up in the left hand top. Has a lot of path rust and swelling the members. Some of the cross bracing, the attachments are rusted through. But since the main members are not rusted as bad as some of the secondary members, it gives it a number five, a fair rating. The substructure has a lot of sprawling, a lot of deterioration in the concrete. It ends up with a four, which gives us the overall, the overall rating of a four for this bridge. Some of the things we're gonna look at is really kind of two approaches. Early on, so we'll take a look at what bridge rehabilitation would take, and we'll also take a look at bridge replacement. Typically, with bridge rehabilitation, we end up with a shorter service life. It'll be back there again and again. So you'll end up with higher maintenance costs. And in this particular bridge's case, because the piers on a spread footing and the abutment on a spread footing is scour critical. And that's part of why in 2018, 2019, I think you probably saw some bridge work out there, where we built up some stall and riprout, riprout around the pier to kind of batter it from heavier seasonal flows over the dam. When we look at bridge replacement, there's kind of three options there. We can shift the bridge a little bit upstream. We can shift it a little bit downstream to try and help alignments. Or we can replace it in place. Usually, the shifts occur if we're doing phase construction because you need to add a little bit of extra lift, extra width to handle traffic, traffic control. In traffic control, we sort of have three options. We can phase construct it. We can detour everybody close bridge and detour everybody around. Or we can put a temporary bridge in and build a bridge. All three of these options, sometimes we'll use alternating one-way or close a ridge, close a road temporarily. And the slide I have up aside, it shows kind of Old Street Road. And this is one of the ones we've been, and very early on in the discussion, we wondered about. You have such tough geometry with a curved bridge coming in, 136 coming in, and Old, Old Street Road. Maybe in trying to get traffic to work easily through this section, it would make sense to either make that one-way temporarily or close it temporarily. One of the things we can kind of discuss when we get near the end. In detours, there's two. We would, we would sign the state detour. If you're trying to go from the current bridge down here at 202 and 136 up to Hancock Road, that's about eight, a little over eight miles. Takes about 10 minutes. If the bridge was closed and you had to go up 136 and 31, that would add about six and a half, seven minutes, and close to three miles. In town, local detour is short to begin with, but the total would be about six minutes, as opposed to three, and about two and a half miles. That's proposed 1.8. So it'd add three minutes to your drive or about seven tenths of a mile. And these are, these are just sort of conceptual things we started to pull up and data we've looked at. From a cultural historic point of view, this bridge has been checked. It's not eligible for the listing on the National Register. So there's no concerns there. There has been some discussion that Peterborough's North Village has the potential to be a historic disbridge. And if that was the case, there may be constraints in the way we go about building or repairing this bridge. And it's some of the things we're looking through. The project area is probably about the third slide in. It shows that we have some constraints from sort of a cultural and historic point of view. We have a Wilder Thermometer Factory, and that affects both the northwest corner and the northeast corner because of the remnants of the roads down. On the southeast corner, almost exactly under where the south abutment is, at one time, there was an Arday House that said some of the workers at the Thermometer Factory and/or the Sawmill had lived at one time. So there's been a recommendation, if or when we get into abutment work there, that we probably want to monitor it for any archeological sign and treat it with respect accordingly. The southwest corner is where the 1836 dam, Sawmill Dam, just touches in. And it's actually very close to the bridge, so if there's any shifting alignment, it's possible we could start to impact that sort of south abutment of the dam. So each corner kind of has its own cultural and historic significance. I've got a couple of slides here. I think you guys are probably very familiar with the Wilder, Wilder site and the Rotary Park. You can see the remains of the old sluiceway that was blocked off. And I think they opened a channel here for when we get high flows, it'll make it into the river. The old canal went out and under the, under the road there. So this is the northwest corner. On the northeast corner, this, I think, is 202, and I think right over in here is sort of the new parking. It's sort of some of the remains of that, that canal that called the Sawmill and the Thermometer Factory. And that's kind of a long distance, looking at the northeast quadrant, the bottom corner. Southeast quadrant, in this area, you can kind of see the end of the sewer siphon pipe. And it's right about here that the, the abutment starts. And we think the Arday, the Arday House was at one time, that we have to take into consideration. You can also see 136, how quickly it comes in in the very edge of Old Street Road touching in. And then a couple of pictures of the North Village Dam. And on the right hand, you can see that little bit of abutment, and on the top left, you can see this. It's interesting. I mean, it's 1836 construction, but roads shift very quickly. You can kind of get in this area. I put this slide in because I liked it. It sort of consolidated everything we talked about. Here, here in the 1890s, this picture was taken. You can see that the 1886 bridge, that was there from 1886 to 1942, isn't quite finished. But there's another picture, I think, in the historic sites that showed the last little bit of the point work being done here in the spring. So here you have the Thermometer Factory up and running, the bridge that has been taken out, the dam, the Arday House, the canal, the current road that comes right, right through here currently, Route 202. Basically slips right through those. From, from federal highway requirements, we need to talk about Section 106. This allows people to get involved in sort of the National Historic Preservation Act, and how to get in touch with Jamie Zakora at Federal Highway. Rebecca may touch on this a little bit at the end, just so you're aware, that's available. From natural resources, obviously, things we'll be looking at, essential fish habitat, threaten their endangered species. Often, we run into the northern long ear, ear back. Sometimes that causes up to shift when certain components of construction can be done. We'll be looking at if stormwater needs to be treated, where the 100-year flood claims are, any impacts to wetlands, and then sort of the permits and things we need to do to comply with all that and make sure we're a good steward. Currently, we're in the process of review for the National Environmental Protection Act, often referred to as NEPA, and cultural resources. We're trying to give you a quick sense of some of the data we've been gathering, just sort of what we're starting to see. And we want to touch base with you guys. Generally, when we're on sort of the first part of meetings, of projects getting off the ground, these are some of the areas we have concerns of the people in town have a better insight to it than we do. And what emergency response routes, mutual aid, school bus routes, flooding concerns. And you get down, in your case, the sewer, the dam, Old Street Road, how critical is that? Is that something that could possibly be one-way for a little while? Our closure, thoughts on detour? Generally, we start the discussion about there, but I wanted to touch base real quick with Rebecca and see if there was anything she wanted to add regarding environmental or any further information on the 106. Are you there, Rebecca?
I am. Thanks, John. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. John, you did a great job running through all substantial resources that we're evaluating and considering. And I just encourage anybody that has a concern about historic resources in the area to consider reaching out to Jamie Zakora. His contact information was shown before. He can set you up as a consulting party for the project, and you can become more involved that way in helping assess the resources that are there and if there is potential need for mitigation. So thanks a lot, John.
Thank you, Rebecca. Taylor, I guess I would kind of open it up to you guys. Do you have some thoughts, questions, observations, things you think we should be aware of as we're moving forward? Concerns with a detour or a temp bridge or one-way? Anything that pops into your head, we'd like to hear. See what we can.
Forgive me if you mentioned it. When was this project slated to begin?
During the very early stages. It'd probably be at least about four years before it would be getting advertised properly. Would you like me to jump back up to one of the first slides that kind of showed the whole area a little bit better? Does that help for discussion purposes?
Sure. First thing that jumped out to me was the potential, the possibility for one-way traffic on some of these roads. I don't, I don't know how that would fly.
Yeah, one of the things we were debating about, I'll probably put it back so it's a little larger for everybody to see. Is the bridge isn't wide enough to do phase construction and keep two lanes of traffic on it at one time without impacting the dam. And it would end up with a shift going to the upstream side, and we'd start touching the edge of sort of the Wilder Thermometer Factory area and come over here, and we'd get very close. So then we started wondering, suppose we had one-way coming in or going out, and then half the traffic going in the other direction had to use a detour? You know, would that be something that seemed reasonable to locals? Again, these are just very early conceptual, high-level thoughts. Anything you guys can think of. Old School Street, you can kind of, Old Street Road, I love the name of that. You can see how it's tucking in, just as you have kind of a little bit of an island. Bridge Maintenance has told us this is a really tough turn for trucks now, and kind of a couple of years around, you're replacing this rail. And that's one of the things with geometry of truck turn traffic, some of this stuff is, that we can take a very close look at.
I think there's.
Yeah, I, we have a bunch of experience with 202 being shut down to one lane recently.
Was that for the work down towards the village itself?
Yes, and, and pretty much every day, it's shut down to one lane. And oddly, that hasn't caused a massive amount of problems. I think more problems would happen if you started trying to do detours or one lane or going on Summer Street or Old Street Road, because those people have already had.
Okay. Is that an alternating one-way? Well, I'm sorry, Nicole.
No, I was just going to jump on and agree with, with Bill on that. One of our major concerns would be the increased traffic on Hunt Road. That road's already closed through truck traffic. So that, it's very narrow at a certain point for quite a distance, which makes it very dangerous for, for large trucks to try to pass each other on. So we, the town's already taking a step of limiting that. I think it would be very difficult to at least not allow alternating traffic throughout the process.
Okay. To add on that, for a truck to navigate downtown Peterborough, even to get to Hunt Road, would, I mean, that would disqualify most of that type of thing.
Yeah, as a kind of a general rule, and pretty much all the time, when we're working out detours, we keep them on state roads. And kind of our feeling is, on the local roads, people that live there and know about it will find their own way around. But for the, the bigger traffic, the truck, the people that are just passing through, that's when we typically detour all onto the state roads, and we just leave the local roads alone. There's, there's, there's obviously cases where the town prefers it, and there's reason for it. But generally, not something we do. We just kind of let, let the town people drive the way they normally would.
Even to try Old Street Road and harmily drive would be extremely difficult for truck traffic because there's a little tiny rotary at the junction of those two roads next to the hospital.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's hard enough to drive around in a car, and much less in anything real.
Yeah, I was thinking more, you were talking about this rotary down here.
Right.
Okay. Typically, the thought would be to push the traffic on the state routes, that what we might limit is people coming out into this. If you're trying to move them through a temporary bridge or on this detour, we may say, well, you can't go out that way. You'd have to come back this way. For people that lived in this area, we wouldn't want.
Nobody would have a problem with that in Old Street Road getting shut down, I bet you.
And, and that's kind of one of the things we want to look at. We didn't know, you know, is this really critical one that everybody loves, they use all the time, or it's a quiet street? And if, if for part of the construction season and one of the phases or something like that, we close it, and it just becomes a quiet road. We wouldn't push big trucks or heavy traffic down local roads. We would be pushing up 136 now around, and we just have to get used to an extra seven minutes or something on a trip through the construction season.
I have a comment.
Yeah, Ed.
As far as Old Street Road, I mean, that's a convenience, but it's, it was way more of a convenience to get quickly through, now going down around the Main Street Bridge to get into North Peterborough. But now that harmily drive has been constructed, I mean, to me, I think it should either be one-way down at this end, at that end near where the bridge is gonna be, or, or just, or shut it down. You don't need it for the group traffic up one-way to get, get, get around there, you know? I don't think it would be as much of a problem. I mean, no matter what happens, we're gonna have some inconvenience anyway. So I think that would be a good thing to consider, is either, either shutting it down or making it one-way.
Yeah, close it down.
That's not, that's not off the table. That's very good to know. Thank you.
That'd be the absolute least of your worries.
Well, there's one of my big worries that you guys know about.
Well, closing into Old Street Road is, that's gonna get the littlest amount of pushback.
Okay, thank you.
It'll get some, probably.
If you can do, you know, like alternating one-way over the bridge while it's under construction, I think that's your typical answer, my opinion.
Okay, and that's one of the things the traffic numbers would kind of dictate how big a queue we'd end up with if we could push 7,000 cars.
Wow, you can watch it right in downtown any day you want, next week.
Okay, thank you. I knew, Cole, I think you wanted to say something.
I did. I just wanted to ask, do you have a schedule yet for traffic studies and whatnot that will go into the planning for this project?
Well, good question. We're actually, Steve Haas could probably talk a little further on that. I don't know if you want to jump in, but I'll brush over the top. Steve had started doing some of that, and I think he pulled some of the traffic numbers you had used down towards Main Street. We were going out to get some traffic count numbers, and we were talking with our traffic department. They said, well, with COVID, because this was last summer, they said, "Traffic numbers have dropped so far off. If we do any counts, you're not gonna get any reliable data."
That's, that's incorrect.
They're starting to pick back up. Traffic guys have started to find multipliers you can use. But right now, we have some basic numbers that are, we're pretty comfortable with. I don't know, Steve, is there something you want to add to that?
Yeah, there's actually two concerns with the traffic counter. I mean, COVID is certainly one of them. But the state's been keeping good track of historical data between last year and this year, and have some factors that they could apply. But the biggest concern was the closure of the, of the Main Street Bridge and the rerouting traffic associated with that. So there was really no way we could do a traffic count this year or this past year here and get an accurate reading on that. So we actually got data from the Regional Planning Commission from 2018. They had come out to the 136-202 intersection and done a count. So just about as recently as we possibly could get reliable data, they gave us that. And we've used that to not only analyze what one-way alternating traffic across the 202 bridge would look like, but also what would happen if we did some sort of detour bridge down 136 and reconfigured traffic. So we have started to take a look at it, you know, that's about as far as we've gotten, is running a quick model. And we want to have this conversation to see what the town felt about some things, because closing Old Street was one of the things that factors into those operations, so.
Whereabouts would you locate a detour bridge off of 136?
Well, I've got a sketch. I can find it. It's the...
Bob John's looking that up. I could offer up that the town does have some kind of data that could help to support this. Bob, John's looking that up. I could offer up that the town does have some kind of data that could help to support this. We've had done a fair amount of more speeding related, but it does have traffic counts. And we've done it on most of the surrounding roads that we're talking about here because we've had a high level of complaints relative to speeding on Old Street Road, Summer Street, Hunt, all these areas. So Nate and I have worked together over the years and I'd be happy to provide that, that helps you, Steve.
Great, thanks, John.
That'd be wonderful. This was one of the real early concepts of where you might be able to fit in a detour bridge. I think Steve has started to do a few truck turn movements on a more recent version of this. This is just an old sketch we have. And that was part of what was driving the Old Street Road, if you sweep in trucks and trying to make the turns. I don't know if Steve, if there's something there you want to share. But this was very high-level. This is what we were kind of thinking.
Yeah, nothing major on the turning movements, John. Obviously a challenge getting larger trucks on that bridge, but I think this graphic highlights well. You can see where the detour bridge lands and you can see where Old Street kind of juts out on the bottom left there. So what we're hoping to avoid is if we went with this alternative, having two intersections in quick succession right there, we didn't think would be the greatest, so.
And again, these are very, very high-level conceptual type sketches. And what kind of drove us to this was having the idea of dam right here that any little ship and thermometer factory, these strong historic sites. If we did a temporary bridge, a lot of times that's something that sits a lot on top of the ground with some, they'll say, not impacting. Didn't do such a great way. Sort of, sort of an early thought there.
So I guess just to add to this, one of the benefits of this temp bridge is it would allow us to maintain traffic in both directions, which is a challenge if we do the phase bridge or the kind of the shift in the existing alignment. It also makes pedestrian accommodation potentially easier.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Steve. I meant to mention that.
So I guess one of the thoughts, we were just looking for your thoughts on usage by pedestrians out there. Bicycles, we think we plan to maintain no matter what. Pedestrians is a bit of a bigger challenge. I'm curious what the town's thoughts were, how many people are using it. The counts I have from Southwest Regional Planning shows some activity for, actually, they just gave bikes. I don't think I have pets. A handful of bikes. They don't have pedestrian data. But is the town aware of how much use that side, I don't actually get this. I know that the high school and elementary school are north of here, so.
The high school and middle school are north of there off 202. The elementary school is on the other side of downtown. I think we would only at best be able to provide you with anecdotal information on the pedestrian traffic there. We don't have any real numbers.
But add to that consideration of pedestrian, the town's ability to run its winter operations too, Steve. We do have to maintain that sidewalk that runs from downtown out to the high school. It's a substantial effort to clean that and maintain it throughout the winter. So if a pedestrian bridge, if the current bridge couldn't accommodate our equipment during construction, it would be advantageous to the town to have some way to get our equipment crossed without having to use a central vehicle and provide, I mean, our sidewalk traffic to maintain pedestrian foot traffic throughout the winter.
Thank you. That's a good observation.
I also have a comment. There's a water line in that bridge.
Yes, I know our utilities section has reached out to the town regarding the sewer and the water line. I don't believe, last time I talked with Brett McRae, that he heard anything back yet. So we are aware of it there. We just don't have a particular on it right now.
Okay, well, let's connect you with Nate. Nate's our utility superintendent, so he's certainly the person that you need to speak with.
Okay.
We've done quite a bit of work with Brett over the last few years too, so I'll put it on my radar and make sure we speak. We've certainly been talking about that area, but it doesn't appear to be where we've seen specifics to this project quite yet.
No, because it is in the early days. Did I get that? That was Nate? Thank you, Nate.
Great. I would like to add that I really appreciate the work you've done to notice the historic resources in the area. And whereas this bridge may not necessarily be an historic bridge, certainly the area around it is beloved and very scenic and the sensitivity to that is pretty important. A liaison to the Heritage Commission, a pretty strong Heritage Commission, as well as a very skilled conservation commission. And certainly, they could be consulting members on this to make sure that our constituents are looked after with regards to their, you know, input on the project.
Good, thank you. I have a lot of faith in our environmental group and we've been very fortunate with the people we have down there.
Great, yeah, it looks like a good, good start, so.
That building, what Tyler said, there was, it's aptly named the Rotary Park because there was a group here in town less than a decade ago, actually probably closer to five years ago, that invested substantial time and effort partnering with the town to build that park back up. It has noted in the presentations of drainage improvements and increased the aesthetic of the overall park. We'll want to work closely, to Tyler's point, and I guess as I'm speaking here, we also mentioned the town has studied the dam. Does have some preliminary reporting, some funding options, sort of, we've been discussing with the community over the last number of years relative to how we go about rehabbing or replacing that dam. On the radar, that's also information I'm happy to share with whomever on your end. I'm sure you can glean quite a bit of good news from information from our reports. We work with Stevens Associates on our inspection and we have to provide that as well.
Great, thank you very much. We have talked with Stevens and they have shared some with us. It's an interesting dam. I'll give it back. A lot of my family is over in the Vermont area and I remember having very similar dams like that near where I grew up with utilities. Quite like them.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or thoughts?
I have a question, John. Will we addition public input sessions? I know we'll be working closely as staffs as this project moves forward, but do you intend to have any more public solicitation sessions with the community?
Yes, what we'll do is after this meeting, we'll go back and start taking a harder look at some of the options and develop the one that we feel probably best fits it, but we'll have a couple on the table. And at that point, we'll come back and kind of share what we're finding. You know, this is usually where the surprise issue, you suddenly find there's a turning movement that no matter what you do, you change your vehicle around there or, you know, the hillside comes in a little tighter or something like that. And so we start to be able to sort of eliminate stuff or they start to especially become a higher cost to try and get that way. And we start weighing the options and that's when we like to get back with the town. So they can give us our input at that point and start to work and narrow it down.
Sure, that makes sense. And this option of the potential temporary bridge and its location, you know, if it can be done with minimal impact, it could be a great solution, so.
And it's very, you know, it's very conceptual. This is the sort of thing you sort of punt in there and then as you're doing turning movements or something, you slide it a little left, a little right, you know, a little wider, things like that. Thank you, guys. Unless someone else has something else they'd like to share, really appreciate the chance to catch up with you guys. Took me a little longer to get here than I planned on. Wanted to get to you guys a couple of months ago when I was a little, little caught up in other things, so thank you.
I think this, yeah, this is good timing. Thanks for coming out. It gives us some time. Four years-ish should be enough time to get all the kinks out.
Yeah, cool.
We have our Main Street Bridge project we're working through. It seems to be going smoothly. Then we'll have the bridge at 101 and 202. So we'll, you know, this one coming up should, you know, ease by.
Okay, great.
Four years, we'll have our game done, so.
Great. I'm going to do the stop share button. Hope that clicked right.
Is it, Dan? Thank you.
I would just add that there would be some equipment out there doing boring's around the bridge so we can find out what's underground.
Yes, thank you. This is Don Liefert, everyone, the PM on the project. Yes, and that's a good point. The current, I mentioned briefly, but the current substructure is what we call a spread footing. It's sort of a wide platform and then the stems are built up off it. One of the things we're kind of debating about is possibly some piles or something similar. So we would eliminate the potential for scour issues in the future. And the boring group is hoping to get out there before the end of April to take a couple of core samples along the road to get a sense how deep bedrock and some of the soils are under there, just to help us sort through some of those possibilities. Thank you, Don, for reminding me of that.
Don, mind quickly, because I see Nate squirming in his seat as you mentioned this and I'm reading his mind. If you could give us the heads up on that, that is a pretty critical piece of our sewer infrastructure in that area. And in the past, when you've done this scouring project, Nate or his staff were on hand to make sure that everything was according to plans. And we appreciate the heads up there.
Okay, thank you.
And we, it was mentioned that it was 2012 when this bridge was red-listed and we see the deterioration. And I seem to recall you did mention that there have been some repairs to it to prolong it a little bit. How, it'll be monitored, obviously, throughout this time and if need be for weight limits to drop on it or?
Exactly. Once a bridge goes on the red list, it gets monitored once a year. And if it gets, they start to see increased deterioration, it's fact that it currently goes to six miles. And then they start looking at, start working with the Bureau and trying to determine what weight limits to put on and things like that. Yes.
Pretty good.
All right, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. As mentioned, Seth McLean is here with our, and Nate Brown are here with Department of Public Works update.
Hey, Tyler. So we wanted to, in the past, the Public Works hadn't come to the board when it was time to resume activities such as seasonal flushing. But given we've been in drought condition for the past year and we've had quite a few instances of dirty water as a result of not flushing, we're trying our best to get out in front of it and notify as many people as possible. The purpose here was just to come to the board and let you know that we do plan to begin those activities next week. Week Monday is the date we had specified date. It feels appropriate to use of the state as far as we know at this point based on the data provided is no longer in a drought. In fact, no level of drought whatsoever in our county, in our area. Some significant drought is to the east and the north of us, but our areas, as of right now, bounce back. We'll see how things go. We'll continue to monitor it. I suppose I also piggybacks on that we need to have a conversation sometime relatively soon about mandatory water again that's currently in effect and making a decision about that. But that's essentially where we're at. We just wanted to notify the board on that. The plan is to begin those activities beginning next week. I did ask Nate to be here today in case you had any specific questions about how we do that or any other information that he can provide on a technical end. And I guess I'd open it up to the board now if you have any questions about that program.
I would say I appreciate the note that was put on the NICSIL notification when there's a water main break about, you know, discolored water and flushing. That was, it's a good addition to that. I'll show you the, you can kind of see the wrinkles in my tin ceiling there. That's where the leak was coming through when I didn't pay attention to my sink upstairs and it overflowed.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ed? Bill?
Come on, Ed.
Thanks, Seth and Nate.
Hey, Bill. Thanks, Tyler. With that, I guess we can move on.
Sure.
I wanted to provide two quick project updates. There's been a couple of projects that we had previously funded. I'm sure you're all aware of, but I can give a little bit of the background there. The first being the West Pete Road sidewalk extension and drainage improvement project. This went through the May of 2010 meeting. It was fully funded. It's currently in the operating budget up to an expenditure of $256,000 and fully offset by the West Pete Road tip. A little bit of background on that. The West Pete Road Tip Advisory had gone to former administrator Bartlett asking for his thoughts on some potential improvements in that area, given that there was money in the tip. And he had identified an area that we in Public Works have dealt with a fair amount, and that is the flooding that occurs around the end of Rock Farm Road and then on Old Dublin Road. There's a culvert kind of near the intersection, near the four-way intersection with Union Street that experienced quite a bit of erosion and issues. I know Ed had experienced that himself and had been called me numerous times over the last few years when he had some issues with the impoundment in that area. That project is going to be going up to bid via the online format very soon. We're currently working with our engineer on that project to finalize the details on that. But I expect that we'll be going to bid on that within the next couple of weeks, I suppose. I am happy to put up a, would you like to share my screen and show you a pretty basic document that should run people through what exactly that project entails, if that's of value here?
Yeah, that'd be great. Please.
There will be one moment. And please let me know if you can see the screen.
Yep, it's on.
Okay. So this is the basic. I hope you can see that. It's probably kind of small on some screens. I apologize. But if you can see my cursor, you can see Rock Farm Road right here over to the right. Here's Union Street. Here's Old Dublin Road. We went through a process of retaining all the necessary adjustments and permits to move this project forward. We have those in hand, so like I said, we are going to have to bid. And what this project entails is the replacement of the two culvert pipes that you see called out. One here by Rock Farm Road, including the head wall, the structure that connects to that pipe. These will be upsized to a 42-inch concrete pipe. There's a small amount of sewer roof location working here to facilitate the project. This sidewalk here is being extended across the street, picking up the other condos on the other side of Union Street. On Old Dublin Road here, this is being upsized to a 42-inch concrete pipe, head wall replaced. Some riprap put in in various locations. The entire project bounds of all sizes, you see the grading and enhancements to drainage swales to improve drainage. There's also, like we mentioned, a catch basin being installed here to help some of the water that comes down from the highway in this area. But generally speaking, relatively straightforward project. Sorry, I missed a little bit. We're going to be adding some crosshatching to help pedestrian traffic. That is essentially the scope of the project. Again, so it's doing roughly at this point, hopefully it holds, although that's a $256,000 project. And it will address much-needed drainage and some pedestrian enhancements in the area. Would that, happy to take your questions if you have any. And it's a pretty straightforward project, just upsizing the pipe instead of making some enhancements to pedestrian safety in that area.
If the bid does not come in under that amount, what can or could be cut or what would be the process then?
If that's the case, Tyler, we'll go back to our engineers and see if there's a way to get this project done. Really, any number of things could, but I think that's a decision that would have to go through a little bit more formal process, including with the board. Make some decisions there on what makes sense. But the critical pieces are clear with the drainage and the issues we've had there. So I think if you were ranking it top-down, we want to make sure we take care of the drainage to prevent any additional problems going forward, especially as raised to the drainage that's pretty much partially veiled at this point on Old Dublin Road. We've done repairs there, but it really needs to be upsized and developed. Followed by any remaining drainage work and the sidewalk from there. Now, to your question, though, I did ask that question of the engineers and I said, "How have bids been coming in?" Do we think we'll actually be able to get this project done? And they were very confident that we raised enough money through last year's process that by putting this up to bid now, we should be able to get this project done.
Great. Bill or Ed, any questions?
No, it looks good. I know that thing on Dublin Road, that, where that culvert, where that is, I mean, it was all eroding on the right side of that. Coming down Old Dublin Road and it was somewhat dangerous. If anybody ever went down in there with their car, it would be good.
For sure. We even lost a small section of the roadway there during one of the heavier rain events a couple of years back. Relatively easy repair for our Public Works department, but nevertheless, it is a compromised area.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that not getting bid under $256,000. It seems, that even seems like high for me.
Yeah, to your point, Bill, our intent is always to try to get that number lower. So we'll be looking for opportunities to make sure that project comes in below that number as we put off projects.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. All right. Next up.
Okay, so the next up is the Grove Street. I'm sorry, we're going Riverwalk Parking Lot. I have a Grove Street in my mind. It's Riverwalk Parking Lot. And I did come to the board in December, maybe, and said, "Okay, we're going to start working with the River Energy Committee, soliciting information from them to try and get moving forward on the installation of two Level 2 charging stations for electrical vehicles." At the time, we resolved the issue of whether or not those could be tax-supported, meaning the electricity for those. And we talked to the board about that. We had agreed with them that we would not do so. So from that point, we had, again, gone back, spoken to the River Energy Committee a number of times, solicited their information. They were, they're a very active group. They provided a tremendous amount of data and a whole number of vendors for us to begin our discussions. We quickly learned that this is a complicated project. It is small in that there is a tremendous amount of competition in the marketplace for electrical vehicle charging stations. There's a tremendous amount of models, both hardware, software, different subscription models. Nevertheless, it took quite a bit of time, myself and the IP director here, Kevin Posh, who worked on that, speaking with each one of the vendors, provided to us, doing some of our own research, finding additional vendors. And we have finally drafted up our RFP, which is going out tomorrow. This is a little bit of a proof drawing, just to show you visually what's being planned. Our RFP goes out tomorrow. We're going to directly solicit seven vendors. We'll be posting it in various places so that if there are vendors we didn't speak to, they'll have an opportunity to solicit us a proposal as well. Sorry, to provide us with the work. But what you're seeing here is a topographical of a pretty proof drawing of the Riverwalk Parking Lot. And it shows the port's location, as we've been discussing all along. Our goal is to install two Level 2 charging stations, as shown on these little red triangles, where we've got little pedestal mounts. Those will each serve as two of these parking spaces that have a crosshatch design. The town did have a foresight when working on this project to install conduit that follows the mast here. It stubs out, comes up with a little conduit stub here at this blue box. So there's a minimal amount of trenching and excavation work that needs to happen to connect those to pedestals and eventual hardware to the existing electrical system. We've verified the electrical system that is there. See the picture is in place and will support the turning stations. And at this point, we expect the end of our P to go out tomorrow. We're asking for bids or proposals back from vendors by the end of this month. At that point, we'll review all bids internally, take them back to the Energy Committee for their input, and then come forward to the board with the recommendation to accept if we can find one that makes, that we all believe makes sense for the city. So that's essentially my data. If you have any questions there, happy to address those as well.
I recently heard that GM is going all electric by a certain date. I don't know if it's 10 years or 15 years. Is there potential to expand this at some point?
Definitely. That's a great question, thanks, Tyler. The lower right-hand corner, you see the breaker box. There's an awful lot of availability for Level 2 charging in the Riverwalk Parking Lot itself. That is part of our RFP, that the town, while not ready yet, is interested in the potential for future advancement, I'm sorry, it's future expansion of the project. So we're asking companies to keep an eye on that as they recommend to us software and hardware solutions that will work for the town. So we do want scalability. Second part to your question, I met with Eversource probably about a month and a half ago. We walked the downtown because of this question. We know that the technology's heading there. We know that eventually it will be more than Level 2 that's needed. It will be probably Level 3 charging, rapid charging stations. And so Eversource and our rep that we work with closely there was kind enough to walk around with us, do a basic assessment. We haven't done anything formal with them. But to let, to inform us of where we are today, should we decide in the next five, 10 years to move forward on the expansive project downtown, what that would entail is upgrading the electrical system downtown to freebase power, which is present now. But possibility exists. There would be an investment involved. The town would be a part of that. But we are looking at it. We are for certain. Another project that came up, this is just something that the Energy Committee is sort of researching at this point, based on the recommendation of a rather true vendor, is the idea of Level 1 charging stations mounted on buildings in downtown. And that would require a partnership with business owners to do so, but that exists. And what those are, are basically charging stations that, similar to the ones you have in your home. So there are opportunities for long-term expansion to more rapid charging and short-term solutions that might support an economic builder market.
Looking at that, the map of the parking lot, can you just remind us what the asphalt donut is next to the bus station, bus stop?
We talked about this before, Tyler. It's where the UFOs land.
Uh, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, it's a walkway.
Okay.
I don't think I have a better explanation than that. It's a walkway adjacent to the bus stop.
Any other questions? No questions via Facebook regarding that. All right. Great. Good reports. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. I'll be back when we've got some more information on both fronts.
Sounds good. Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. The moment we've all been waiting for, Nicole.
So you want a town meeting update?
Ha ha.
It's, it is coming along. We ran into a couple of hurdles getting together. Let me back up a little bit. As you know, you have adopted provisions of HB 1129 for virtual town meeting this year. One of the requirements of that is to send a postcard to everyone who is on the voter checklist. Well, as you know, the voter checklist is due to be purged this year, this coming year, assuming that, you know, all things hold true. That means that our current voter checklist is five years old, which means there's a lot of people on that voter checklist who have moved out of Peterborough, and probably a number of people who have moved into Peterborough during that time. So we have a lot of names on our list that will not be on the list coming the end of the year. This is a process of challenge to us because it turns out that if a company were to mail out postcards to over a certain number of people who have moved, they are fined by the US Postal Service for not updating their addresses. So there was a bit of scurrying to be done, most of it being done by Ally, who is very brave with her on this project. She was able to work with the printing company, work with town attorney, and come up with a solution for over 500 people who are on our voter's checklist, who do not, they're no longer listed the addresses to which they are registered, when they registered to vote. So Ally worked through that. We have a great proof of the, of the postcards going out that was included in the packet. Those will be getting mailed before the end of this week, well before the deadline. So we're very excited about that. That's just one, one hurdle on our way. We're starting work on the presentation for the virtual information session. There's still a few outstanding questions about how exactly that will run, which I'm gonna work on with town attorney. But I think that we're more or less pulling it all together. So as we've discussed already, but I'll just, you know, run, run through the summary real quick. We'll be holding two virtual sessions. The first one will be held on March 30th. That will be a presentation of the warrant and the articles on the warrant. And then the second session will be held on April 6th. I'm looking at my calendar because I always have to double-check dates. It'll be held on April 6th. Both of these sessions will be at 6 o'clock. That April 6th session will be to answer any questions, address any comments, and then through the select board to finalize the warrant to go into town meeting. At that time, the selectmen do have the opportunity to make an amendment to any article on the warrant, not a petition warrant article, so long as, so long as it's legal, of course, before that the warrant moves on. At that point, the town clerk will take the warrant. She'll convert it into ballot format. The ballots will be printed. We will be accepting requests for absentee ballots. Actually, that process is already underway. So anyone who wishes to vote by absentee ballot may submit that request now. Once the ballots have been printed and received, will be mailed out to those people who have requested them and then mail them back as quickly as they can. And we will, of course, hold our traditional voting-by-ballot town meeting at the community center on May 11th, day of the 11th, which is the second Tuesday of May. That'll be at the community center. Voting will be in the same manner that we've done it for the last year. So we'll ask people to enter in, go back to the community center, to check in at the tables, to flow through, vote at the booths, and then exit out the main door. With the exception of those folks, of course, who are handicapped, who need assistance, they can enter in right at the main, at the regular entrance of the ramp. Anyone who requires more assistance than that can work with the town clerk to vote at the curb side. Any questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. Is there a reason why the mailing of the postcard notifications would not just go to every household instead of every registered voter? Because there are three registered voters in my household, but we really would only need one postcard. And it would save a lot of money, a lot of time, man.
It certainly would have been a lot easier for us to just simply mail to everyone with the zip code 03458. But state law was written, HB 1129 was written to require mail to every registered voter. So we have to follow that, you know, absolutely to the letter of the law.
Great. And then my second question is, could we make sure that we include in the Facebook page and in the weekly dispatch about the absentee ballot requests for people starting immediately?
Absolutely. Yep, we'll get that information out, and we'll keep churning it out until we get right up to voting day.
Great. To the first part of your presentation there, Nicole, about the first discussion about postcards, has anybody found something that Ally can't handle effectively and efficiently?
I'm sure we'll find something.
I doubt it. You can turn it tomorrow. She'll be on NHPR. Is that correct? Am I getting that right?
That is correct. Ally will be interviewed on The Exchange. The Exchange is a radio show that runs on NHPR from 9:00 to 10:00. My understanding is that Ally's interview will be in the second half of that program, starting around 9:30. But of course, anyone who's available should listen. The Exchange is an excellent show, and it's always quite interesting. So.
That was a nice plug, man. I'd like to see the check for that one.
Very shameless, very shameless plug. I'm hoping to get my free tote bag this year.
How do you see it? Where do you have to go?
It's on NHPR, so it's on the public radio station. But actually, Ed, you would be able to listen to it via the computer. They do have a live stream that they run. So if you go to nhpr.org, you'd be able to listen to it as it's happening.
And if you can't listen to it live, you can always put your cassette player on a timer and it'll record it for you.
Yeah, off your smart radio.
Right.
Obviously, no, we have not, and probably not.
When is the beginning, when is the beginning date for people to sign up if they want to seek election?
That is March 24th this year.
Well, that's soon.
It's coming up, yes. It's next, it is next Wednesday. The month is flying by.
Good, yeah, good point. And so people in town can check the town website to see which positions are up for, or have open seats.
Yep. There are postings about that at the townhouse and in the, what I think it ran last week.
Right. All right. So it looks like we have town meeting in order. We did, we did accidentally skip over the New Hampshire allocations under the American Rescue Plan. That's something we'd like to share?
Yep. It can give you very brief updates. I really don't have a whole lot of information. I know that the town is, like every municipality in the country, will be receiving a grant with no strings attached from the federal government, portioned onto the population. So for the town of Peterborough, we are looking to receive $660,000. We'll be receiving that in two installments. The first one within 60 days of the passage and signing into the law of the American Rescue Act. So any time now. The second one will come before a year has passed. But we don't have an exact date. We don't know exactly how it's coming to us, though presumably it will come through the state just as the previous grants have come. And once I have more details, I'll send those out.
Okay. All right. And then we'll see where, where it's needed most and who could benefit the most from it.
Yes. I also assume that you'll probably have to hold a public hearing to accept those funds as they are anticipated funds. So we'll look to schedule that as soon as we know when the money's coming.
Right. All right. And as, as mentioned, we always have very thorough minutes from Ally Kreutz, again, taking minutes this evening. We have a motion to approve the minutes from January 5th, February 2nd, and February 16th. So.
Second.
Excellent.
Second.
And we'll all move. Hi, Tyler.
Hi, Ed.
Hi, Bill.
Great. Another unanimous vote on the minutes. Much appreciated. And if you've been watching this evening, you've benefited from, benefited from the work of Tim Brezovic, who's behind the scenes, making sure we're on Ustream and on Comcast Channel 22 and Facebook and even on the YouTube. And as always, these meetings are archived for future viewing if you did miss something or wanted to check on accuracy of minutes. All right. Thanks so much, everyone.
I just, I just had one question.
Yeah.
Which town department is in charge of dyeing the river green for tomorrow?
Oh, we already lost Nate, unfortunately, so.
I just saw Christie Loretto out there with a, with a bag of green flakes.
Oh, okay, good. Well, I hope, I hope he knows that the river flows in the opposite direction of most of them.
Just heard Ally laugh from the post.
How to tell when a meeting has gone too long.
Well, it looks like Chris is on it.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. Stay away from people.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.